The meeting of the Scarborough Planning Board dated December 12, 2022 will come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under the Constitution, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Doreen, you please do the roll call.
Rachel Hendrickson.
Here.
Roger Beale.
Yeah.
Jennifer Ladd.
Here.
Rick Mindking.
Here.
Next item on the agenda, by the way, we do have a quorum. Uh, next item on the agenda is the minutes for November 21st, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There any changes, additions, corrections? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Rachel Hendrickson.
Yes.
Roger Beale.
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd.
Yes.
Rick Mindking.
Yes.
Thank you, item number five, and for the information of the public, item number nine has been tabled at the request of the applicant. Number five, the planning board will conduct a public hearing to receive comment on proposed amendments to the Town of Scarborough zoning ordinance. The proposal would amend section 11 off-street parking regulations to add subsection L to prepare for installation of and/or installed vehicle infrastructure in new development and redevelopment. This is a public hearing, so I ask that there is anyone in the room who is here to make a comment, to please go up to the podium, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes for comment. Since there's nobody stampeding to the microphone, do we have anyone online? All right, thank you. Your public comment period over, but I do ask for comments from the planning board. Uh, there's any members of the planning board that would like to make comments?
May I?
Yes, you may.
Um, I'm sure, I'm sure my colleagues can read as well as I can, well, maybe even better. Um, but just to give a big, big picture, uh, what, what this is trying to accomplish is, um, adding, EV charger infrastructure, uh, within the ordinance of the parking ordinance. Uh, we're not changing any of the number of parking spots or anything like that. What this does is it takes the existing requirements of the ordinance and then establishes a percentage of those parking spots that are need to be, uh, you know, have some sort of EV infrastructure, and it doesn't necessarily mean a charger. It just means the ability to get power there, or in some cases, it will be, you are required to put a charger on. Uh, but what it really is trying to do is answer the, or, or create a, uh, mechanism that will enable Scarborough to begin to build out in the infrastructure for EVs, supporting EVs. Uh, we're particularly, Sustainability Committee worked on this for a number of months now, as, uh, a few people can attest to. Um, and what we're really trying to do is get this infrastructure going primarily, uh, with single-family homes and multifamily homes. The requirements are rather, um, important, uh, because charging, uh, is done mostly at night and at folks', uh, primary residence. And so if you looked at that ordinance, that's why it's the hundred percent, um, requirement on those aspects. And then you look at some of the other building uses, like hotels and everything like that. We've tried to think, uh, the Sustainability Committee tried to create a way in which it made sense, it's certain entities or certain building types to have different levels of infrastructure, uh, that would support, uh, the EVs. So, um, I, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. If you had a question about the ordinance, uh, I know, uh, Autumn's been, uh, in part of those discussions. We held a stakeholder, uh, meeting where we had developers, um, in the room talking to us about what their thoughts were, and, um, we've fine-tuned the percentages, uh, based on their input. And, and so I think what we have here is something that, uh, fits nicely into, um, the ordinance and is, is the right, uh, right mix. And, um, well, I would encourage you to, uh, take a look at it and support moving forward.
Thank you. Uh, let me ask Autumn, do you have any suggestions or changes? I know you've been instrumental in getting this to us.
Oh, thank you. Um, I do have one change that I think, based on additional conversations, to recommend striking section 5.4, charging and parking. It is just for clarification, because it says EVCS parking spaces where provided for public use are reserved for parking and charging electric vehicles only. I do not think that the town has any capabilities or intention to enforce that, so we just thought we would strike it to make it very clear. So you can still use these for your overall parking requirements, but if we strike that, then there's no enforcement. That was it.
Thank you. Anybody else on the board?
I have a question for Rick.
Sure.
Um, you made the comment that, um, when you talk about infrastructure, I'm assuming you're talking about like conduit going to a, a particular location where a charging station can be installed, set up. But you did say that sometimes that charging station will be required. What, what would be those?
Well, it's, it's laid out here in the, in the ordinance itself. If, I think the last page, um, describes the three, the, uh, a space is capable, meaning it just has the conduit installed, but lacking any electrical capacity. Then you have the EV system installed, which means you can actually plug a vehicle in. And then ready means the, the source of power is capable to be brought into there via the conduit, and it's ready to go with.
Sorry about that. Don't ask me to repeat what I said, because I've already forgotten it. But, yeah, um, it's, it's ready to go because the building has the power available. And so if you would go through the different, um, building types, you can see that the percentages, um, are listed there. So in some cases, for example, um, let's pick, well, for the single-family home, we're saying that, uh, it has to be a hundred percent ready.
And that's level two, right?
Uh, yes, level two.
Okay.
Yep.
So, so somebody was gonna be building a, um, say on a garage, putting a garage, you know, building a new garage to, uh, to their home, they would have to put in an EV station.
Yeah, that, no, because it's got to be through a site plan. When, when they go to do it, do you want to answer that?
Sure, it would not be with an addition, it would just be with a new residential permit.
Okay, but if you basically just make sure the proper wiring is into wherever they want to plug in their vehicle.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. But, but it doesn't mean it has to go in a garage. If you build a brand-new house, uh, in a, in a development, and you don't put a garage in, you will still re, be required to have it able to be EV-capable. So you'd have to have a piece of conduit that runs down to the power supply, but that's it. You don't have to have the charger installed, you don't even have to run the wire.
Okay, but, so if, um, if there was a, for instance, a retail store, or this.
A health club. Yeah, a health club.
Five percent?
Five percent of those have to have, uh, EV chargers installed.
Five percent of the parking spaces?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That's the requirement, all right. Yep, and I, I have a question for, uh, do you want to make a comment to Autumn? Um, I was very pleased to read your, your memo regarding, um, October 14th, the town show.
The parking.
Yes, because I've actually raised that a few years ago. And unfortunately, it never got anywhere, because, um, it came up after the, um, the restaurant out on, right? Like the one, um, on the restaurants, one parking space for four tables or booth seats. I think that's, that should be two. And, um, the same thing for one for every two employees. That's, it's so unlikely employees are gonna share a ride to work, especially working in a restaurant. Just, I think it's so unlikely, you know? So those are two things that I've brought up in the past, so I'm glad to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I have, uh, one comment, and that's section 5.2.4. Um, that the EVCS, uh, must operate for their normal business hours. Um, I would suggest that there be something in the language that says the operating hours shall be posted in a prominent position, so that people driving by or thinking to stop to, um, to charge their cars, see a sign that says, sorry, we're, we're closed in effect. Or this charging station is only energized during the hours of such and such and such and such. And also, there's another place in here, I believe, where it's mentioned that there should be of commercially, that there should be a, a phone number available if people have difficulty. Um, I would suggest that language be beefed up, simply to say something to the effect of displayed in a prominent place, so that people aren't digging around in the snow or, uh, in back of, in the landscaping to find the phone number to get them, to get them assistance. So it, it's, it's more of a, a design question, uh, that's kind of tied to a, a safety, a safety issue. Uh, otherwise, I, I think the committee has done, uh, an excellent job with this. Um, we, we don't often have brand-new ordinances, um, basically put together from scratch, uh, and the, the committee has done excellent work on this, thank you. Next item, the planning board shall conduct a public hearing to receive comment on proposed amendments to the Town of Scarborough Site Plan Review Ordinance. The proposal would amend section 2B, activities exempt from site plan review to require site plan review for projects proposing more than one single-family or two sing, or two-family dwellings on a single lot under unified ownership.
So this one came up through this board, the planning board. You may all recall the eight tiny homes that we reviewed under subdivision. However, um, we were really looking into more site plan detail, and the applicant complied. Uh, but this brought up a topic that right now, we don't have site plan requirements for single-family on one lot. And so this proposal essentially requires a site plan. So if we have a condo regime, or we have single-family for rent, which really functions as a multifamily project, but it's all on one lot, we can require a site plan. And so we can have input on the design and the layout and the amenities and so on. Uh, so this, this is that ordinance, uh, and we did it through the unified ownership. We worked with the town attorney to make the language match the language that we already had in existence. And then the next item is a cleanup that we found, um, that's related. So these two ordinances are really what came out of that discussion with those tiny homes and wanting to see site plans for things like that. So it doesn't affect us, a normal single-family lot, it's only if you have more than one building, uh, and not an accessory dwelling unit, but more than one single-family or two-family unit on a, on a lot.
Thank you. This item is available for public comment. Is there anyone in the room that would like to comment? Seeing none, is there anyone online? Public comment is over, let me go to the board. Let's take these separately and look at item number six first. On the, uh, the change in chapter 405. There is a single change on that, um, on, I believe, the back page. As Autumn said, this is really kind of cleanup language based upon what we found, um, issues we found with Simplicity Court. No comments? Uh, I believe that this does adequately address the issue in terms of the planning board's responsibility. Next item, the planning board will conduct a public hearing to receive comment on proposed amendments to section 2D9 of the Town of Scarborough zoning ordinance. The proposal would add requirements to permit multiple buildings on one lot for multifamily and multiplex uses where permitted. Autumn?
Thank you. So this one came up as we were going through the unified ownership. It's not clear, it, while it's implied for multifamily buildings, it's not clear that you can actually have one, more than one multifamily building on a lot. And so we added this language in red on page three or four, um, that made that very clear. And so now you can do multifamily units, uh, structures, excuse me, on a single lot. So this is the, the language in the middle that added.
This is an item that also is subject to public hearing. Is there anyone in the room that would like to address this? I see a lot of head shaking going on to the negative. Is there anyone online? Thank you. This public hearing is over. Does the board have any questions or, uh, suggestions or comments? Again, thank you. I think this adequately addresses the issue that we, that we came across, uh, with the Simplicity Court. And I, I think that really cleans up the, um, the concerns that raised because of that. Number eight, Taylor Goble requests subdivision termination of Wittenwood subdivision located at 34 New Road, accessories map R35, Lot 17. Eric?
So, uh, Northeast Civil Solutions and Mr. Goble have been working with the planning department on the termination of Wittenwood subdivision. This property is located off of New Road and was previously approved by the planning board back in 2019. Uh, created six lots off of New Road, which would have been served by Snowy Owl Lane. Uh, the developer of the subdivision no longer intends to develop it, uh, and therefore, uh, they are in front of the planning board requesting termination, uh, of the subdivision. The remaining land currently identified as 34 New Road would remain in possession of the current owner, uh, while the area formerly occupied by the approved six-lot subdivision would, uh, be conveyed to Mr. Goble. Uh, procedurally, the board needs to review and approve any subdivision termination requests, uh, which is formalized by recording of a termination agreement and a separate notification that's signed by the town manager at the registry of deeds. Uh, if approved, uh, the board would need to sign the agreement. Um, and staff's only comment to this point is something we've been working with the applicant on, uh, which is to provide a private way application for, uh, the access to the 34 New Road property owned by the Chatmises. Um, this would be such that the, uh, Chapman's property can still maintain the required 200 feet of frontage in the rural zone. And with that, I would turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and for the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I'm Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil, representing, uh, the Goble family this evening. Um, as Eric just surmised, uh, everything is, uh, well, we'll back up here a little bit and say COVID continues to strike. Uh, we got this approved just before COVID hit, basically. And then, uh, kind of all bets were off, as far as that's concerned, over the course of the last couple of years. And then there was an individual, um, on behalf of his family, who was very interested in buying the entire parcel, but not as a subdivision. So essentially, what we're looking at, as Eric just mentioned, is a previously approved subdivision that we just prefer to terminate, and that'll put it back to, um, two parcels of land as opposed to one overall. And that's really all there is to it. But I'd be happy to address any questions or, or answer any, uh, comments that you might have.
This is an item that is subject to public comment. Is there anyone in the room that would like to comment? And then the head shakes again, is there anyone online? Thank you. Well, the comment is over. I turn this over to the board, if they have any questions. Uh, this is, by the way, I, I cannot recall anything like this coming before us, so, um, to, yeah, to term, to terminate. Um, I did have a question about why the private way. Eric was very kind to explain to me that the, the two portions of the property that would be, provide road frontage are separated by several building lots. So in order for the Chatmises to be able to have a conforming lot, they need the access on the private way. Do you have any questions? Roger?
Yeah, um, I just have a question for Eric. Uh, like, uh, Rachel said, um, I don't ever recall anything like this. Is, I, I try to have to believe this is the only time something has been, a, a, a proof plan has been terminated in the town.
I mean, I've only been here for a year, but this is the first.
You should research this.
I, I spoke with, I had to speak with our attorney about this on multiple occasions, just to get clarification on the process, and he's been practicing for 20-plus years and says he's only seen it five times. So there must be something about my presence that encourages the, I'll take the blame.
No more questions, thank you. Um, I am, as a chair, I am required to sign, um, this is, this is a first as well. I'm required to sign, um, an agreement to terminate the subdivision approval, um, which will, if the motion passes, uh, be sent to the applicant upon, um, the, uh, private way approval. Uh, and so saying that, I have a draft, I have. So saying that, I have a draft, I have a motion, Wittenwood subdivision termination. I move to approve the termination of Wittenwood subdivision proposed by Taylor Goble. Findings, the proposal terminates Wittenwood subdivision as shown in plan sets recorded at the Cumberland County Register, Registry of Deeds in book two hundred and nineteen, page five hundred and thirty-one. Conditions, prior to release of the signed agreement to terminate the subdivision, the applicant shall A, obtain a private way approval for Marlin Lane. Is there a second? Rick Minkin has seconded. Any questions, comments? Please, Doreen, please call for the vote.
Rachel Henderson?
Yes.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd?
Yes.
And Rick Minkin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, who's got a pen? Item number ten, Dunston Tap and Table requests a master plan amendment of the Dunston Village master plan approved by the planning board on August twenty fifteen. The amendment includes updating required parking and building footprint as part of the site plan amendment for the restaurant. Eric?
Thank you. So as part of a site plan request for a thousand and eight square foot addition to Dunston Tap and Table, we have also sort of split off that request to separately amend the master plan, which was provided by the applicant in their materials. The amendments really essentially update the existing plan, which is currently shown on the, on the screen to show updated parking calculations as well as the current setup of the parking lot in the site. With the straightforward nature of the proposal, staff has no other comment on the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Sean Frank. I'm a civil engineer with Sebago Technics. I think we'll probably get into more of the, of the site plan parts, but for the master plan, it really is the enclosure of the existing patio to the rear, a portion of the existing patio to the rear of the building for, for, from seasonal to full-time seating, as well as with the opportunity to add eighteen parking spaces. So with that, it was basically amending the approved master plan to show that one thousand and eight square foot addition to the back of the existing facility in the, in the eighteen parking spaces as shown on the plan in front of you. And with that, I would conclude my presentation and again, probably just get more into the specifics as part of the site plan review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go down to get to the amendment first. This is subject to public comment. Is there anyone in the room who would like to comment? Hearing none. Is there anyone online? Thank you. Public comment period is over. I turn this over to the board. Remember, we are looking at the master plan, which is essentially presented to us as this document showing the changes on the second page. And the changes are the parking spaces and in addition to the back of the building in closing essentially part of the patio. Anyone care to go?
I'll just say I'm okay with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have anything else.
All right. I have nothing. So in considering that the board has no comments, I have a draft motion, Dunston Village Master Plan. I move to approve the project titled Master Plan of Dunston Village proposed by Dunston Tap and Table as depicted on the plan set prepared by Sebago Technics dated eleven fourteen twenty-two with the following findings and conditions, findings. The project amends the Dunston Village master plan showing as built layout on site, updated parking calculations and building footprint area proposed to be added by Dunston Tap and Table located at six Stewart Drive. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roger Beely. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Doreen, will you call the, call for the vote?
Rachel Henderson?
Yes.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd?
Yes.
And Rick Minkin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we move on to the next item. Number eleven, Dunston Tap and Table rec requests a site plan amendment review of Dunston Tap and Table for a one thousand and eight square foot building addition for seating and restaurant space. The property is further identified as six Stewart Drive assesses map U thirty lot sixteen oh three. Eric?
Thank you. So similarly to the master plan, the Dunston Tap and Table is requesting a site plan amendment to add a thousand and eight foot, square foot addition to the rear of the existing restaurant. It would occupy the area, part of the area currently used for outdoor dining, enclosing a portion of that seating area. Part of the proposal includes showing an additional eighteen parking spaces at the northwest corner of the site to be built if the full build out of Dunston Village should ever require additional parking. Staff would like to note that the existing parking on the site meets the town's minimum parking requirements. And staff's main comments revolve around proposed lighting and building architecture. Other items to note is that the town has, the applicant and the town have been communicating with DOT to ensure that the additional trip generation as part of this project are within the applicant's approved TMP, which DOT was able to confirm this morning. However, they've noted further occupancy would require review by the DOT to ensure the off-site improvements along Broad Turn and Route one would need to be installed pending any further occupancy. And with that, I would turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Now, Sean?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Sean Frank with Sebago Technics. With me tonight are the Brennermans, the owner of a Tap and Table. As you, I'm sure most of you are familiar with the, with the facility. Basically what occurred during COVID was they worked with the town to allow for additional outdoor seating. As part of that, they constructed, expanded the patio that was out back to provide that outdoor seating. Obviously, as things have progressed and, and regulations have kind of eased up, they've been kind of filling that area in so that actually now what we'd like to do is to enclose that patio with this thousand and eight square foot addition to the rear of the building. So that basically rather than just seasonal, it's going to be year round. From that standpoint, I have looked at the staff review comments, certainly the five, it's a four thousand six hundred and seventy square foot building. So it's certainly fine in terms of meeting the maximum ten thousand square foot addition total. The actual building materials and colors will be exactly the same as the existing building. We'll get those on the architectural drawings. They did, we did reach out to the, to the original builder and make sure that in fact we know exactly what they're, they're utilizing on that. Notice the drive width on there. We're not proposing to construct drives. I think the drive width waiver was actually part of the original Dunston Village associated with that. We, there's certainly more than fifteen percent landscaping, snow storage, there's plenty of room for that. We'll just show that on the rear of the parking area. And we'll reach out to the sewer and water district associated with that. Again, we were looking at this as, as basically encompassing existing seating that is out there. But just looking at it from a strictly permitting standpoint, it was originally permitted for ninety-two seats back in two thousand sixteen and seventeen. And the total at the end of this day will be a hundred and thirty-five seats, including everything, outside, inside, and the bar. So that with that, we will make sure, and as Eric stated, been working with the town's consultant regarding the, the impact fees. We think we have those updated now, working with DOT in terms of the timing of the offsite improvements and how does that impacts this. And as Eric stated, what we are showing are eighteen parking spaces that could be constructed along the edge of the existing parking that's out there. The total does meet the requirements of the ordinance, but as we all know, sometimes where you park, it's, it's pretty much all shared parking out here. But our anticipation is especially as the full build out, as you recall, Mr. Chamberlain is currently constructing a building right across the street from this one. There are three more that are still allowed to be permitted and constructed out on this facility. All basically right along the Route one frontage. And our concern is, certainly the applicant's concern is, is at that point in time, as this gets built out, that certainly that proximity parking, if you will, would be very needed for, for the, for the viability of the restaurant. We looked at the, the drainage which goes into existing catch basins and into existing wet pond that's already been constructed out here, which has adequate capacity for the stormwater. We are aware of, of the staff comments. We see them as relatively straightforward. And would certainly request a conditional approval from the planning board tonight if appropriate, Madam Chair. And with that, between myself and the Brennermans, we'll certainly do our best to answer any questions that you folks have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is also an item that is available for public comment. Is there anyone in the room who would like to comment? Hearing none. Is there anyone online? Thank you. Public comment is over. I will turn this over to the board for questions and comments. Who would like to go first?
I just, a clarifying question, you, the intent is to not build out the additional parking until it is needed? Is that right?
Yes, our anticipation is probably towards the full build out of the village itself. Like I say, there's three more buildings that need to be constructed out there.
So not in conjunction with the addition, but we're, we're permitting it at the same time?
That's, that's our intent. So just so that we don't have to come back to this board. In fact, when we want to add those parking spaces, our anticipation is that we'll be, build this addition this spring. And like I said, just certainly want to have those parking spaces available, which I, again, when will those other buildings be constructed? We really don't know at this point in time. But like I said, we certainly like to have the flexibility to be able to go in there and build those on a as needed basis.
Yeah, sure. That makes sense. That's the only question.
Thank you. Anyone else? Rick?
Yeah, just on the, on the lighting there, it, we should get that on the photometrics plan where those new parking spots would go and what, you know, what level of lights they will be at. If you could just work that in, you may not even have to change the fixture itself, but maybe just a reflector inside to make sure that you get the, the coverage you need, but it should be on your lighting plan.
I appreciate that. That was one of the staff comments and certainly we will just have swinged it, update their photometrics associated with that.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Roger? Roger's all set. I've got some questions. I must admit to a certain amount of confusion when I looked at this. I wasn't clear whether it's going to be year round or three season.
The, the intent is to make the seating year round. The whole idea is to get it inside.
Okay, I, as I looked at it, I wasn't clear where the heating was coming from.
Everything's going to be extended from the interior of the existing building. So in terms of any electrical service or the sprinkler service or, or the heating, it's all going to be just extended from the existing building.
Okay, as I looked at the architectural plans, I noticed that the windows on the, on the proposed addition were different from the windows on the rest of the building. And we do ask for congruent architecture. So we would need something different.
Have you ordered the windows?
So I gather the applicant agrees to make the windows congruent throughout the whole?
Would appear that the applicant would agree to make the windows congruent with the existing building.
Thank you. And I assume that means the colors as well?
Yes, and the colors, like I say, the intent always was for the colors to, to match the existing building.
Okay. I did not see the plans, although I, I could see from the architectural drawings that there's going to be a, I believe, an overhead, glass overhead door leading out to the patio?
Yes, it will be, yes.
Okay, we usually like to see, you know, how that's done?
Oh, that wasn't about, part of the elevations that you received?
It was part of the elevations without any additional information on it that I could find. On the other hand, when I'm looking at two-point type, I, the font, I have a little difficulty.
I, I will get some, and I, if, again, part of the staff review was to obtain some additional information along those architectures and certainly we will get that additional information added to that.
Okay. Is there anything else that you want to discuss on the, the comments from the, the staff?
I was all set with them, Madam Chair. I tried to at least go quickly through a number of them. Again, I think we pretty well have provided something for the traffic consultant. I think the engineering review is basically add sizes of landscaping. And like I said, I did try to go through quickly in terms of the, the comments from staff. And I guess our bottom line is we have no issues with the comments if the board hasn't. And if appropriate, we certainly appreciate a conditional approval to address those comments to staff satisfaction.
Let me confer with the staff for a moment.
I can't help you with that one.
If the staff, if the board has, no longer has any questions, I have, excuse me, I just ran over my bag here. Draft motion for approval. The Dunston Tap and Table. I move to approve the project titled Dunston Tap and Table Building Edition proposed by Dunston Tap and Table as depicted on the plan set prepared by Sebago Technics dated eleven fourteen twenty-two with the following findings and conditions. Findings, the project amends the Dunston Tap and Table site plan to include a one thousand eight square foot addition to the rear of the existing restaurant. This would enclose a portion of the patio area currently used for seasonal outdoor seating. Waivers, number one, section four D two to permit a drive aisle width of twenty-two point thirty-nine feet for potential eighteen parking spaces at the northwest end of the site. Conditions, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall A, address the comments of the staff memo dated twelve twelve twenty-two. B, address the comments in the Haley Ward memo dated twelve, excuse me, eleven twenty-nine twenty-two. C, address the comments in the Traffic Solutions memo dated twelve six twenty-two. D, pay impact fees to be determined. E, revise the architectural elevation as discussed and at the twelve twelve twenty-two planning board meeting. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you. We have a second. Are there any comments, questions? Doreen, please call for the vote.
Rachel Henderson?
Yes.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd?
Yes.
And Rick Minkin?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I just want to say that's, just, it strikes me as awesome because here's a business that is growing in, in Maine and in this, you know, the great American neighborhood that was once the plan. And it, it's just awesome to see success growing in, in Scarborough. So congratulations on your growth.
Number twelve. Item twelve, None Such Development LLC requests review of the fourth amended Mitchell Hill Height subdivision. The proposal would further subdivide lot fifty of the approved subdivision into five additional lots along Martel Way. The property is further identified as assesses map R zero nine lot six fifty. Eric?
Thank you. So None Such Development LLC is requesting to amend the, the fourth, to have a review of the fourth amended Mitchell Hill Height subdivision, which would further divide lot fifty into five lots, as Rachel had mentioned. This will require the applicant to request a waiver from the planning board for zoning ordinance section nine dot I dot four G, which sets the max. Which sets the maximum total lots served by a private way to six, since this would serve seven plus a remaining land, uh, lot, so it'd be seven or eight. The uh, without that waiver, the road would be required to be built to town standards. Staff's main concerns revolve around the provision of HOA documentation to address maintenance and repair of the roadway. Uh, as, and stormwater infrastructure and reduction of the uh, hammerhead turnaround to avoid. To minimize wetland impacts, uh, as well as provision of applicable state and federal permitting. Earlier this afternoon, we went through the previous subdivision approvals. Um, hopefully this is relatively straightforward, but uh, if, if it, it's not too clear, I'm happy to answer questions. So basically, in short. Uh, the original subdivision was approved uh, in two phases. The first phase, which was closer to Mitchell Hill Road and fourteen lots, which is shown in that red area, um, sort of at the top of the screen. That was approved in two thousand and three. Uh, phase two uh, was approved uh, as a conservation slash cluster subdivision. In uh, late two thousand and four. Um, before that second phase approval, the first phase was amended, um, I believe in February of two thousand and four. There was a second amendment which re- uh, revised some building setbacks for one lot, uh, which was approved in two thousand and eight, followed by the most current plan. Uh, the third amended subdivision, which added land to lots fifty and fifty-one, which is the area shown in blue. Um, and then I attempted to show the proposed five lots in dashed red lines. Um, those are very rough, I should note, uh, not exact, but just sort of to give the board a general scheme of uh, how the subdivision has progressed over time. Um, and with that, I would turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and for the applicant.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, my name is Matthew Orr. I'm a civil engineer at Sebago Technics, and I'm here on behalf of None Such Development LLC. As Eric mentioned, this was a previously amended and approved subdivision by the third amended uh, subdivision as received approval in two thousand and eleven. Uh, we are looking for the fourth amended to further subdivide uh, lot fifty. Into five single-family house lots as lot, as well as extending the private way known as Martel Way, approximately seven hundred linear feet. Um, this subdivision was previously approved within the uh, conservation cluster standards for the town of Scarborough. As far as what the applicant is proposing, we're looking at extending the uh, roadway, as I mentioned, and. Then selling off the lots individually, so they will not be responsible for the actual build out of the lots. And along with that, the recreational trail that exists on the northern side of Martel Way will also be extended. Um, as we show on our plan. And then connect with the existing trail network um, to plan uh, southwest as shown on, on the screen. Uh, the lots will all be served by private onsite individual wells and septic systems. Uh, there is underground electric um, on the south side of Martel Way, which will be extended as part of the uh, road improvements. Um, as Eric did mention, uh, this project was previously approved as part of a Site Location of Development Act permit with the main DEP. And as such, we are filing an amendment to that um, SLOTA permit. Um, and with that, the new improvements to the roadway. Uh, as this portion will fall into the uh, linear portion of a project due to just the nature of the road being extended. So we will be responsible for treating and providing detention for the uh, stormwater runoff that will occur from the roadway. Um, and with that, we're proposing a couple different underdrained soil filters towards the frontages of the lots. And then in meeting the flooding standards for detention of runoff, we're uh, providing some smaller detention basins in the rear of the lots. Overall, it's, as Eric mentioned, it's a fairly straightforward project. Um, and we have reviewed all of the staff comments. And are not opposed to any of them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. This item is subject to public comment. I should point out that we have received uh, several communications, Lori Wiley. David Madden. Andrew Grant, and Grant's uh, submission was signed by. I believe twelve of the butters. Um, they will be in the record. This is a time for a public comment. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make a comment? If so, please come to the podium and give your name and address, and you have three minutes, please.
Hi, um, my name is Lori Willie, and my address is nineteen Fangler Road. And um, I don't have anything written, but I'm just here to ask the board to uphold the standard that we have um, had in. Our neighborhood for years and years, and that is the eighty thousand square feet lot size. These are um, substantially smaller, and I believe it would affect the neighborhood. Um, overall, and it could also have impacts on the well system as well. And I think, I think that was it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone online? Thank you. Public period, public comment is over. Um, let me ask Eric some clarity. I believe the old standards for the conservation district, and this was, this is a conservation district. Uh, conservation subdivision before we called them conservation subdivisions, we called them. What did we call them?
Uh, cluster subdivision, that's a very common term used statewide.
All right, cluster subdivisions. Um, what was the uh, standard for the lots?
Uh, fifty thousand square feet.
And when did the, when did that standard? Um, when was that standard imposed, uh, under, under what subdivision, under what amendment, at what time?
Uh, so that was as part of uh, the original uh, approval, but phase two, uh, which was approved at the end of two thousand and four.
So since two thousand and four, anything built in that area uh, has been subject to the fifty thousand square foot uh, lot size?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's turn this over to the board. Questions, observations? Roger?
Uh, Eric, that fifty thousand was the minimum, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And these, these new, this seems to be the uh, bone of contention, I think, with the butters, is the size of the lots. So the new lots will be. Just above that fifty thousand square foot.
Yeah, I believe the smallest one is fifty-four thousand and some change.
Yeah. And. What section now on these um, these plans we have? I'm trying to figure out like, I'm trying to get clarification. The original Fangler was on, under the old. Criteria, right? Which is like eighty?
Uh, so what, what do you mean by the original thing, like?
The original Fangler Road, phase one.
So, yeah, so phase one, uh, all of the lots were over eighty thousand square feet.
Okay, and, and did it change with phase two?
Yes, phase two was approved uh, with this um. Uh, the. Space and bulk standards that are shown on, on the screen right now.
Okay, and that would be Freedom Road?
Uh, that includes the area of Freedom Road, yes.
Okay.
It's essentially only the um, first seven lots uh, on each side along um. Uh, Fangler Road on that northern part closer to Mitchell Hill Road, outlined in red in the diagram on the screen.
What do you mean, those, those are the, those are the ones at fifty thousand or those are the ones at eighty thousand?
Uh, excuse me, yes, so the, those are the ones that were eighty thousand at the top of the screen in red. And basically, phases two through five were approved as a cluster subdivision. Um, which is shown in green, basically the entire about bottom two-thirds, uh, which includes, I think it's about. Uh, fifty-three lots out of the sixty-seven lot subdivision.
And they, they were approved at fifty thousand or thereabouts?
Yep, yep, and some of them are larger than that, but for, uh, for the most part, they all hover around uh, fifty, sixty thousand square feet.
And refresh my memory again, those came in when?
Uh, phases two through five, which was part of the original approval, uh, were approved by the planning board on December twenty-ninth, two thousand and four.
Two thousand and four, thank you.
Reclaiming my time.
And I, go, go ahead. Roger's reclaiming his time, but I, I, I'm getting more clarity as we go along, so it's a, it's a good use of time.
Sure, um, and, and this um, these new, this new lot, this lot fifty. Was part of the, it would have fallen into this revised minimum lot size.
Yes, that's correct. So the third amendment actually added lots fifty and fifty-one as now shown on the plan.
Okay.
And now this fourth amendment would subdivide the western portion of lot fifty-one, of lot fifty into five lots.
Okay.
It's sort of strange, it, it's one lot, but there's a lot in between.
I would say, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it sort of looks like three lots, but it's really only two lots in that portion with one being proscribed.
And the new requirement has a hundred and twenty-five foot frontage requirement.
That's that same requirement that was set in two thousand and four.
Okay, so, and then there's an easement involved to get one of these lots to the hundred and twenty-five feet, but, Roger?
Uh, yes, there will be acquisition of more land that was a part of the original uh, lot five, I believe it was.
Where, what, which one would that be? Where would that be?
Uh, was at the, the end of uh, Martel Way, so it was.
Lot seventy-two?
Um. Believe it was lot seven, so, yeah, I'm sorry, the lot that will be acquiring that land, yes, will be seventy-two.
Okay. The only other thing I, I noticed, I, I Googled the um, this whole site to get an idea. I've, I've actually been out there in the past, but not recently lately. And I noticed, uh, going in off of Fangler Road. I, I guess that, that's um, the Martel Residence right there?
Yes.
There seems to be a, a looped road right there.
Um. Is. On their property or further?
Probably is. Yeah, it's like a shared driveway. Yeah, you see it there?
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it, it's probably lot um. Six, five, zero, uh, what is that? Six. Well, it, Christopher Martell. Okay, it's just a looped driveway.
Yeah, that's mine.
Oh, that's, okay. Well, you know, I, I can. I can sympathize with the, uh, or empathize with the, with the butters, but. I, I don't see where the um. The applicant.
Uh, e- excuse me, um, I, I don't mind you making a comment, but uh, it would be very helpful if you could come up here. And speak into the mic, because we are hybrid and it is going out over Zoom, so folks. Can't hear you and he can't hear what you're saying when you're, when you're back there, so I appreciate it if you could come up.
Rachel, just, you know, to um, Wally Fangler, has his hand raised, the original developer.
Uh. Let me ask Roger to finish his questions, and then we'll ask Wally to uh, make a statement if he has one. I mean, oh, if, if it hasn't been responded to, uh, Roger's questions haven't been responded to.
I guess I'm all set. I, I, I just sympathize with the butters, but the fact is, I don't see where. There's any, you know, the applicant doesn't have any, um, I mean, can't go, go ahead with this, this um, development, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Um. Can you promote Wally so he can be on the screen, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I just want to, to add to this, that when you went to the cluster development. I gave the town of Scarborough sixty-six acres along the None Such River and up Carter Brook and another Brook. As well as the site where the Willie Mammoth was found, which was another seven acres, so. Uh, there's a lot of public recreational benefits, and my son and I gave a trail easement. That starts at the corner of Mitchell Hill and Holmes Road, goes over his land, goes behind. Uh, phase two through five crosses over and connects with Martel Way. And goes all the way down to the None Such River, where there's a beautiful bridge that crosses over to the Fuller Farm. So. Um. I just add that in because uh, there was a benefit to the cluster development.
Thank you, Wally. Uh, Jen?
Um. For my own clarity, but maybe also in response to some of the comments that we heard from the public, Eric. Can you just clarify again which standard? Applies to the lots that are before us in terms of. Their sizing. So do they, are they meeting the standard that, that applies in this case? And I understand that. Over the um, over space and time here, we've had a couple of different um, criteria apply.
Yes, so uh, this project does meet the um, the standards of the subdivision that was originally approved back in two thousand and three and two thousand and four, which is the fifty thousand square foot lot size minimum.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think that's really my only question.
Uh, no, at this point, public, the public comment period is closed. At some point, if there is a question that the board has that somebody who is not standing there can answer. Um, we will, we will go with uh, the expertise from the field. Rick?
Well, I don't have anything now that the discussions that we had.
Thank you. Um. I, this, this was kind of difficult for me because I, I got. Caught up in what happened before, what's happening now, but I think this hearing has, has clarified that. What we have left, uh, in a sense, is now what the staff memo. And the various uh, memos from. Haley Ward, and did we get traffic memo?
Yes.
Yep, Traffic Solutions. So let me, let me go uh, back to the applicant. And do you have any questions or issues with the? Items that are left that the staff has brought up that needs to be done before this can be approved?
Um, no, I think the biggest one is just the granting of the waiver that we requested to maintain status of a private road. Um, and with that, we would. Most likely look to move the um, end of the hammerhead turnaround to be the axis of the uh, last driveway on the, what's being proposed, a lot seventy-two. Um, and with that, we would pull that road about sixty feet to the east and have less impact on all that wetland and remaining land.
All right, thank you. Um, we do not have a. We do not have a draft motion tonight. This is not quite ready for that, but um, I'm, I have every confidence that you can respond to the issues. Uh, let me ask the board just to do a. Not an official vote, but just to do a general um, sense of the board. Uh, the waiver request is for the road width and the road crown. Um, are there any concerns about those waivers? Because. Without them, the, basically. We're saying to the applicant, go back and redesign everything, which is our, within our ability to do. But um, I think we owe it to the applicant to provide some uh, advice on this. Jen?
Did, did I read that we're, we require even. even private ways to be constructed to town standards for accessing lots over certain us above a certain number of lots?
Yeah, if it's uh, six lots is that threshold number.
Okay.
Yep.
And so is that what you're seeking a waiver from here?
Correct. And then with that, it would be uh, the design standards would be changed. So typically, there's a crowned crowned roadway and twenty-two foot width. Um, if we maintain the private road status, we'd like to maintain the twenty-foot width as it exists. So we'd be just extending Martel as it as it the road width is today. Um, and then the reason for having the road super elevated rather than crowned is just primarily for the collection of that stormwater and having uh, less impact on land outside of the right of way and the further impacts on uh, the surrounding wetland areas.
And remind me again, I don't, I'm looking at the comments, not the plans. It's super elevated in which direction? Towards these lots or way?
Towards the towards the proposed lots, correct?
I have a lot of experience with private ways way after the fact, trying to become public roads, and it's very difficult when they're not built to town standards. Um, so I I I'm not necessarily in favor of that waiver.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I add? Um, we did go out on site and one of the reasons I think that the request for the private way to remain there is an entry feature and a split rail fence and a trail on um, along that private way. We have staff, I think, completely agrees with your point, and we've added some language to their maintenance agreement that it does not, will not, cannot ever be accepted
Okay.
as constructed. Um, trying to appreciate what they're asking for, but also trying to protect the town.
Sure.
I did want to just mention that we put that in here.
Yeah, it's helpful.
Yeah, and I think we can go through that a little more too, just because um, part of our competition with the applicant group sign team was um, they would have to actually upgrade the existing Martel way does not meet. So in order to have a public street, they're gonna have to go all the way back.
Okay.
Um, and that was part of the the issues with light, like you said, lighting utilities, the trail. There's lots of different things that are in the way, um, that you'd have to then blow it out into a public road standard, so um, really, there's not a lot other than, I will say, when it was built, it was built to standard as far as the cross section, the gra, I think there's plenty of gravel and things like that. Um, more what the engineers would consider, it's it's probably closer, but um, all the other amenities not close, so that's why um, we would have to really put a lot of notation on the recorded subdivision. And um, they'd have to rebuild all the way back to the main public street for any kind of.
Is the rest of the road up to this point also super elevated?
Uh, no, it is. It's crowned currently, so there would be a transition at at the beginning.
Okay. That's the one that that one's just really hard to overcome down the road. Um, and it might not, you know, wouldn't might not be in any of our ten years, but um, even with a bunch of notes, you know, I don't know, it's just.
When you have that many voices.
It can get lost over a period of years. Um, however, I I I the fact that the rest of the road isn't already built to town standards so that, you know, if someone were, I I think that kind of changes the context for, in my opinion, a little bit. Um, because if someone were to come in the future and want this piece how how this is my experience, how come the town doesn't plow the road in front of my house? Um, or any number of other public services that we don't provide on roads that aren't public. Um, but that's a much bigger, that's a much bigger lift, I think, if the rest of it uh, would also need to be brought up to standard, so that context is helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger?
Yeah, to go along with what uh, Jen was just saying, you had mentioned that uh, the lots would be developed individually by whoever purchased them.
Correct.
And would this this language would be in any kind of a sale? So that the person buying the lot would understand the situation regarding the road?
Correct. They'd they'd be purchasing into the the maintenance of the the private way.
Okay.
Yes.
So there shouldn't be any surprise to anybody who flies a lot, builds something there that.
Okay.
I would surely hope not. Uh, e- even with, you know, six pages of um, warnings, there still will be surprise to somebody.
But let's hope it's not a surprise to the town, so I would.
Well, that's that would be my hope.
I would encourage that language be included in the next pass so that we um, I'd be more comfortable in in providing the waiver if we actually had that language already uh, developed in in the package.
Thank you. Um, I also would be more comfortable uh, or or simply comfortable with a waiver um, if there was clarity for the purchasers. Okay. So. Uh, okay, Roger says he has a question.
Yeah, um, just just for the for the purpose of uh, clarifying everything for the current homeowners in that area. Um, I'm reading in the uh, in your narrative that the um, the recorded subdivision plan uh, shows a total of sixty-seven lots proposed out of a hundred and twelve lots. The proposed project will increase the total number of lots within the subdivision subdivision to seventy-two, remaining uh, below the total number of lots allowed. So all future lots that may be developed of the remaining lots will fall into the same category. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I think uh, that specific uh, note was uh, more related to the net residential density calculation.
Okay.
Um, so that a hundred and twelve figure would be what would a lot, what would be allowed total for the subdivision?
Okay.
And the applicant just showing that uh, this is under that total figure um, at at seventy-two lots proposed.
Okay.
But only five that aren't currently existing.
Okay, okay.
Or five that are before us.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else from the board? Um, I think I I think.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, can we add one more point of clarification? Um, just to add a note to the actual subdivision plan that planning board approval would be required for any public street in the future? Even more clarification than what we already have in the maintenance area?
Uh, I think that would be appropriate, except I I I see a lot of up and down nods instead of this from the the crowd. Um, all right, thank you. Hey, do you you have a sense of what you need to bring back to us?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Soon.
See you again. Next item on the agenda is Growth Management Ordinance Questionnaire and Responses. Um, this has come before committees and committee chairs uh, for the last couple of weeks. Um, right now, the only person on this board who has maybe not had a chance to see this is Jen. Have you seen?
She's seen with transportation.
You have seen, so we have all seen it.
Yeah.
Uh, is there, so our voices have been heard elsewhere. Is there anything that comments that somebody would like to make that very specifically uh, addresses the issues before the planning board? Roger?
Um, yes, I would just like to, I was looking at the um, exemptions. And this is maybe, well, you're on the long range. Did this come out of your thing, your the long range plan?
You know, this was uh, this was this it's from the town council, John Anderson and Nick McGee.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, were asked to um, review.
I was looking at the exemptions and the um, it says all affordable housing units are exempt. And then it says up to ten workforce housing units per year. Um, and it got me thinking that ten is not that many. I mean, there's a lot of workers out there who would like to live in town. And uh, and I was just um, it are there are there further clarifications or guidelines pertaining to those two categories? Like, oh, not affordable housing, that's based on a formula, right?
Yes, it's eighty percent of the.
Median income or something?
And then the workforce is a hundred and twenty percent.
Okay.
So and the ten, there's a bit of a compromise story behind it, but I've seen that in several committees, that the ten limit didn't necessarily um, continue to make sense.
I see. When I, when I think of this town, I there's there's certainly some people who could take advantage of affordable housing. Right? And and actually, we've, I think we've done quite a bit of development in the last two twenty years, especially on the senior side regarding that. But, you know, regarding workforce, that's a totally different situation, and I think that should, we, that's an area that I think the town really should be, you know, encouraging and incentivizing developers to focus on um, if we can.
Okay. Um, so I have, we have reviewed this also at the Transportation Committee level and um, had some really good discussion around that, and I won't reiterate um, all of that, but I will just make a couple of other points because I think that they're relevant to the planning process here. Um, one is that to the extent it's appropriate, and I'm not sure what that is, um, I think it in some ways, it would be helpful as a member of this board to know where the town is at overall, and I'm I'm talking like very high level in terms of um, new residential units and yes, we, these are all coming across our desk, but we're not necessarily, we're sort of like further up in the pipeline, I think, and um, so I I don't know, uh, I don't necessarily know how many of those are coming online when. And um, that's what I mean, like, maybe it's not appro, maybe we don't always need a full circle update on what that looks like, but I mention it because I think um, as as would I, if I were not a member of this board, I, you know, I think there's a common thought that the the planning board keeps approving residential units. And there, um, you know, the the crossroads that I sit at, a lot of people feel like that results in a lot of extra traffic. And um, there's a lot packed into that, but um, I think it would be helpful to know, you know, maybe it's not even just for us, maybe it's for the the public, the greater public, and this is maybe again, more appropriate for the council, but to just sort of know like where we're at. And and the example I'm kind of thinking of, um, you know, again, a larger scale is the scorecard system that we use with the downs. That's been incredibly helpful over kind of a long period of time at this point for us to just have like a running score, uh, running a a a simple, easy place to go and look and say like, oh, here, that's where we're at. That's right. Um, and so again, like, to the extent it's appropriate, I don't know that we need a full update every single time. Um, but this also, um, I think this is relevant to elements of uh, transportation. Um, again, you know, in my opinion, because we don't know, you know, we're continuing to approve trips. Uh, ten here at this intersection, twenty-five over here at this intersection, but what we don't always know, and we're not always able to keep at the forefront, is what the baseline level of those intersections are. And um, again, this keeps coming up too. This is something that our townwide um, transportation master plan will hopefully help us with sort of a pinpoint assessment on. Um, but just in terms of growth and how people here feel growth, it seems like um, we we all are sort of feeling that in a couple of ways, but traffic is definitely a big one. Um, and so if we were able to to keep ourselves informed, um, and there is a way to keep the public sort of informed about um, just what that looks like on a rolling or some sort of regular basis, I think that that might be helpful. Um, at least for me. Um, without having to attend all the council meetings and tally up how many um, permits they're issuing. Uh, and then the other thing, there's a a couple of questions in here about, if you can find it, um, you know, does the number of, does words to the effect, uh, does it, does the number of units approved have an impact on your board? Um, and again, from a, from a traffic standpoint, and we talked about this in much greater depth, transportation, so I won't go over it, but I um, I think from that angle, actually, the location of those units has the potential to have a much greater impact than than perhaps um, the number, because I think there are certain areas of our community where we can absorb more units. So I think the example we talked about at transportation was if you add you know, fifty units out in West Scarborough, where there is not a lot of density, the next nearest intersection to that, and the immediate neighbors are going to feel that growth more more prominently than if you were to put fifty units in the middle of a development that is otherwise a hundred and fifty units. Um, and so that's kind of something that I'll be um, you know, we have some opportunities to see that come coming forward, um, continuing to come forward through the downs and some of our other denser developments. And so um, that's when when I really appreciated the inclusion of that comment in this questionnaire and something that I'll be looking forward looking for as we move forward.
Thank you. Rick?
Um, yeah, we talked about this in the Sustainability Committee, so um, I won't rehash that uh, from the standpoint um, of this board, um, I don't really have any any other thoughts. Um, I I think that's a good one. The scorecard has been helpful in the guidance so that we kind of have a sense of of where we are. Um, and then, you know, when it comes time, new year, okay, now we go back, and now we have these opportunities. So that would be helpful, but I don't think I have any more uh, substantive comments to make other than what we talked about in the Sustainability Committee.
Roger?
Yeah, I I'd just like to add on uh, to what Jen was saying, when uh, and it pertains to um, uh, question number one, um, number one on on this questionnaire. And um, what I think it's important that the public understands that when we look at a new development, for instance, the one we're looking at right tonight, um, it has to abide by our uh, zoning and our ordinances. And then it goes through peer review, traffic peer review, and then if it's a really significant project, it has to go through main DOT possibly and you know, a myriad of um, regulatory, it's, we just don't pass judgment, say, oh, we'd like twenty-five new homes here, you know, and that's it, not worry about it. So, um, and and the only other thing I would say on on this whole questionnaire, um, I think it's important that it, as an example, um, apartment complexes. I think there's been a belief out there in the public that apartments create a lot of children in the school system. And it's, I think it's my understanding that there's actually some analysis being done on that right now. And I think that would be, something like that would be important to get out there to the public. So when they do see a complex before us for some reason, that they just don't automatically, their default position is, oh, there's hundreds of new kids in the school system or something like that. Um, you know, facts, uh, a- any facts or data that that can be presented to the public, whether they'll accept it or not, that's another story. But just uh, just to clarify, anything we can do.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna echo what my colleagues have been saying. I I I think that um, some of the issues surrounding growth i- in the town um, is is a perception on people's part that there is no way to rein it in, or that we're doing nothing to rein it in. Um, and that it is much more massive than it actually is. Uh, whether it's the schools and impact on the schools or impact on transportation, to the extent that the planning department can develop a scorecard that goes up on its on its site, uh, so that people can see impact. Um, some people will take a hard look at that, and some people will still have the perception that it that it's out of control. Uh, they also have uh, the perception out there that the planning board I has something to do with it, without understanding that our our role really is to enforce the ordinances. And if somebody comes before us with a project that meets all of the ordinances. And if somebody comes before us with a project that meets all of the ordinances, that's our responsibility to say that. It is not our responsibility then to say, and we're going to give you X number of growth permits. We don't do that, that's, that's not our job. So the more information out there, the more some of the, I, I think some of the unease and the concerns will, will go down a bit. The, to Roger's point on the ten workforce housing units per year, technically, somebody could apply for a forty-eight apartment unit with all of them workforce housing. Because there are other permits available, there are a total of one hundred and forty-four. Or up to two hundred and eighty-nine I in the, in the crossroads. But all that does is create a sort of a a nod and a wink that we're going to put up workforce housings if all we're saying is, ten is, ten is what you got. So I think incentives to developers to build workforce housing need to be a little richer than ten. I don't know what the number is, but I think it needs to be richer and more enticing than saying you can get another ten units going up. The exemption process, I think we, we need to have it. My basic concern is simply to ensure that it's really clear what it's based on. Whatever it is, that it is quite clear. And we constantly have difficulty identifying a public benefit, I think sometimes as, as we're looking at our projects, we tend to end up just kind of saying, well, a trail is a public benefit. And we're not entirely sure if there's other public benefits. But what comes before us most is the open space, the meeting places that we can ask for in, in the trails. And I do think those are important, important public benefits, creating access for all of our citizens to enjoy an opportunity to walk through the woodlands, to take advantage of putting down a blanket and having a picnic in a public space. I think that is a, that is a public benefit, that as I look at it, and as I look at what comes before us. Think you got enough from us, and Jen has a question?
Just on that, if anyone's listening, council or whoever is collecting and reading through all of these surveys, I think that this board would benefit greatly to, to Rachel's point to to read those, to read those results. So what do our other committees think public benefit means to them? Because you're right, maybe we're presented with something as a public benefit, but, but that's the applicant's interpretation of public benefit, and so if our committees have each individually taken a look at this and have answers to this question, you know, I think that would be really helpful for us to understand.
I think that's where it's really the question.
This board, yeah, it's great, it's a great question. It is hard, it's hard, it's hard for this board, and I know it's hard for council and everyone else.
Can I ask a follow-up question to the exemption process? Does the planning board see themselves involved in the future in any part of an exemption process? Say, just if the, if the council were to adopt an ordinance that said we had, I'm just making up things for everybody, say we had fifty extra reserve permits, the planning board has to approve them based on meeting ten public benefit points. Would that be something that you think the planning board would be able to administer, if it was clearly defined, or do you think you don't want to have any part of?
I like black and white.
Okay.
From our standpoint.
Right.
Yeah, I would, I would have to see what it looks like, I, yeah, because I, that makes me a little queasy.
Okay.
I, I would also say, I think from a developer's point of view, or whoever's, you know, they want, they want.
Even playing field.
They, well, they want to know what to expect, you know, they, they want certainty, so they're going to start spending money on permitting and all this, engineering and all this other stuff, they want to have some certainty not to end up before us and be like, wow, I really like this, you know? So, you know, when I, when I answered that, when I thought about that question, as it pertained to this board, and what we do, I think the important thing is diversity of the housing stock. You know, based on, on, on the pocket and the needs. And, and I, I think we've seen that, just in some of the large projects in, in this town, how they've gone from condos to rentals. Because that's what all of a sudden the market has changed to reflect that, you know? But I think the important thing is, twenty years ago, we, we had hardly any apartments. I mean, everything was single-family owners. Now, I'm sure that many citizens will say we have too many apartments. But it's, it's, the trouble is, we have, we don't have enough affordable apartments, you know, for the, for the people who work in this town.
Yeah, I'd like to follow what Roger said, and exemptions tend to make me a little queasy because they, they lay themselves open to the thought that somehow or other there's favoritism involved. That maybe something went on behind the scenes that nobody knows about, and this developer gets something, and this developer doesn't. So any process that concerns exemptions has got to be extremely clear, and if it comes at all to us, extremely clear that the process by which we determine something is extremely transparent and as open as possible. And I think we're done. Do you have enough, Autumn?
I think so. For number eight, I'm going to answer it, that is, what you all are looking for is a planning board, that it meets our ordinances and our subdivision regulations, those are your rulebooks, that's your.
Yeah, we, we, we need guidance, we need clear guidance. Thank you. Staff report.
So the next meeting will be January ninth, twenty twenty-three. I believe everybody's also already been provided copies of the twenty twenty-three schedule. The Costco building permit has been issued, and plans received for the Hackmore Apartments to garage and foundation permits, I believe the building permits for those may have come in today, or they'll be coming in shortly. The sustainability committee staff is working to develop some standards for fuel cell development, which the committee has been considering and reviewed at its December meeting. And the election of officers will be held at the January meeting.
Thank you. Administrative amendment report.
None at this time.
Minor development reviews.
None at this time.
Correspondence?
None.
Okay, planning board comments, I'm going to go first on this, it's not something I usually do. This may be, is very likely my last meeting. I had the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, and the town council all have term limits. They are three full terms. This last August, the negotiation, appointment and negotiations committee determined to ask all reappoint, people up for reappointment to complete a full application for, for their current, for a renewal of their current appointment. I did that. On December fifth, something occurred, I'm going to read you a statement that I read to the town council. "I am at the end of my second full term on the Scarborough Planning Board, and I had hoped to continue for one final term. At the December fifth Appointments Committee, statements were made about my tenure and behavior that were categorically false. They impugned my integrity. A council member announced that I had met with developers. I never have. The council indicated that they had learned that from me. They had not. In reference to how I worked as chair, they accused me of knowing too much. It's difficult to respond to that other than to say that I do my homework, my due diligence, and bring an institutional memory to the board concerning prior applications. In the case of the meeting they referenced as an example of their contention that I did not run effective meetings, I was eliciting information about concerns a member of the public had brought to us. The accusations of the councillor are inaccurate and without merit. I have worked all of my professional career on nonprofit boards as staff and as a member. I have never before this been accused of dereliction of my office, of misfeasance, or of a violation of my oath of office. I have served this community every year since I moved to Scarborough. I was brought up believing in the ethic of giving back for all that this nation has given me. That is what I've been doing in Scarborough. To repeat, in all of the years I have served on the planning board, I have never engaged in ex parte discussions with any applicant. I am deeply offended and deeply saddened. My application to return has been tabled. It will be taken up again, I believe, this Wednesday, I have no idea if I'm coming back. I would like to express my appreciation for the people who have served with me on this board. Thank you all." Rick?
Yeah, well, I certainly am kind of shocked. But I'm also not shocked because I too, this could be my last meeting as it was brought up during the appropriate, or the nomination committee or whatever, I'm sorry, I'm not recalling the exact name of, the, the appointments and negotiation committee, there it comes out. They're looking for new blood for this board. And so there, I'm on the, I was mentioned as, you know, not, I talk a lot about EVs, I guess. But quite possibly, this could be my last meeting as well. And it's been a pleasure serving with you all. I, I feel good about what we do here. I feel good of what I have tried to do. Like Rachel, I feel like if I'm going to live in this community, I want to be part of a solution and not a part of the problem. And so I've tried to do that. This is my, I am finishing my first term on this board, I was on as an alternate for a year, filling in for a vacant position, so this is really after three years of, of service. But that's where it stands with me at this juncture. Thank you.
I, I'm disappointed to hear of this. I've, I may, I recall many, many years ago, there was a a member of the long-range planning committee who was some, some citizens took issue with his performance, and I remember I was one of the, just a regular citizen who went to the appointments committee at that time and vouched for the person's integrity and, and honesty and, and what they were doing. And no one, it's, it's hard to get people to serve on community committees. And when people are making accusations, I think it's incumbent upon them to be absolutely accurate, because you are impugning a person's character. And it, it, and it sends a message to others out there. You know, do I want to do this? Because somebody could say something without any basis of facts, and it has an effect. I, I know it does, so I, I hope this gets resolved, and I hope you both are able to return. Okay.
If anybody would like to see the appointments committee, December fifth, it's on YouTube. So it is out there for the world, what was said.
I do have a regular comment.
And I have one, I do have one more comment. If, if you are a nerd, which I frequently am, who likes to look at legislation and rules to make sure that we're following them, the new location for information on what a municipal reviewing committee, I think that's the name, does is on Title thirty-one dash A, it used to be on Title thirty. I panicked when I did a search for planning board on the state, on the state statutes and couldn't find it. It is a municipal reviewing committee, and it was changed from planning board in nineteen seventy-one. So if you want to know what we're supposed to be doing according to the state, that's, that's where you can find the information.
Well, that explains why I don't know what I'm doing.
Thank you.
No, I did have a question for Eric. I noticed on the, at the Downs, I know they were building the road coming in from the parkway to the bridge, but are they also constructing a road from the Downs to the bridge? The Downs Road?
My understanding from that subdivision and master plan review was that they're not constructing that at this point.
Okay.
It's just they, they constructed the road entry from Higas and the bridge, and then it would be connected to the town center when that starts to become built out.
Okay, because I saw our equipment up there that looked like it was road excavation type of.
Yeah, in, in order, in order to, to build the bridge over Mill Creek, they had only a certain amount of time to do it. Okay, so, so that was it, and then we cut it off, they should come before this board when they ready to complete it, yeah. If there's nothing else, motion to adjourn?
So moved, happy holidays.
All in favor of adjournment? Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.